Good evening. Planning Board is now in session. First item on the agenda is a master plan update. Mrs. Luttrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the last master plan meeting, which was on January 15th, Representative Dykema and Senator Eldridge were in attendance to discuss transportation. We had a very good discussion on regional and state transportation projects and issues that could possibly have an effect on Southborough. MAPC also had sent a draft survey. We're hoping to do a survey to reach more people in the process. So they, MAPC had sent a draft survey right before the meeting and a draft visioning document. And we had asked the committee members to send comments to either Judith or myself so we can discuss with MAPC on a conference call that we'll be having on Wednesday. Our next meeting is February 12th, 7:30 at the Senior Center. Also Sarah was kind enough to post our entire meeting schedule for the year on our website, so that can be found there. Thank you.
Mimi, I maybe I didn't catch it. Did you say who attended the last meeting? Was there Senator? Oh, you did, okay. Thanks.
Very good. Any questions or comments? Compliments? Well-deserved compliments?
She's doing a great job.
Hard work that Mrs. Luttrell is doing. It's usually the longest part of the presentation is the compliments to Mrs. Luttrell. Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Annual Town Meeting Warren Article to amend Section 174-10 Site Plan Approval. We'll ask the Town Planner to read the public hearing notice.
This is the public hearing notice for the town of Southborough dated January 7th, 2020. Pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Southborough Planning Board will hold a public hearing, will hold public hearings on Monday, January 27th, 2020, beginning at 7:05 PM in the Thomas J. McCall of Hearing Room, 2nd floor of the Town House, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass. 01772 for the following. 7:05 PM, Annual Town Meeting Warren Article to amend Section 174-10 Site Plan Approval Zoning Bylaw. The revision will update the site plan approval process by giving jurisdiction to the planning board for minor site plan review as opposed to the Site Plan Review Committee. A copy of the proposed language can be viewed in the office of the Planning Board at the Southborough Town House. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposed language should appear at the time and place designated. Sincerely, Donald C. Morris, Chair, Southborough Planning Board.
Thank you. We'll ask the Town Planner to give us an update on how we got to this public hearing tonight for this proposed article.
Back in April of 2019, I had been asked by the Town Clerk's Office to update a letter regarding who is currently on the Site Plan Review Committee, which is typically made of department heads, including the Town Planner, the Building Inspector, the DPW Superintendent, the Board of Health, the Police Chief, the Fire Chief, and a designee from the Board of Selectmen. A conservation agent is typically invited to those review meetings but does not have a vote. In doing so, it was brought to my attention that there's a code, in the town code, there's a section that refers to if you're not a resident in town, you cannot be a voting member of a committee. So there was a question on if this was a conflict with the Site Plan Review Committee, which is made up of department heads which predominantly do not live in town. So we provided a legal opinion request to Town Council to ask what does this mean and how does that affect the process that we were having? And his response included an opinion and recommendation that we update the Site Plan Approval Section of the zoning bylaw, Section 174-10, to change out the Site Plan Review Committee to review minor site plans and have the Planning Board be the Board of Jurisdiction. In that happening, Sarah, my assistant, worked very hard at coming up with a revised bylaw which doesn't really have major changes. The gist of the change is that the Planning Board would have the jurisdiction. Part of that is, there was concern that perhaps it would cause more, I don't know how you call it, it would require more from an applicant. And in a sense, it really doesn't because the application for a minor site plan fee is the same. The engineering review consulting fee, which is typically required, would be the same. There is, it's not a public hearing process. The butters are not required to be notified by the applicant. There is an understanding, though, that if the Planning Board wished, they could do a courtesy of butter notification depending on the context of the project and how it impacted, how they felt to impact the people. So, other than that change, there's some minor clarifications onto number of copies. There were some conflicts as the bylaw said one number of copies, the application said a different number of copies. So that's basically the gist. So we are trying to follow Town Council's recommendation to make this change in order to clarify the code going forward, so there's no longer this confusion. And also with the understanding that it really is not a major impact to the applicants. That's what I have. Yeah, Sarah, did you want to talk about anything to do with that bylaw amendment? Anything that came up?
No, I think that was a good summarization of everything.
Okay. We did receive, let me just see here. We did see, receive some, I had discussions with the Building Commissioner, Laurie Lavoli, with some concerns regarding to what I just described about impacts to the applicant and such. And there wasn't any additional feedback from them. Do you recall any other comments? No. I forwarded her Town Council's opinion that showed his recommendation to take this path. So we're hoping that at Town Meeting, you know, we can give the citizens of Southborough understanding and confidence that this is the good, a good move, also backed by Town Council. I can put that up on the board, too, if you want to see it.
So was that the only, other than Town Council's legal opinion, which sent us in this direction or confirmed us to go in this direction, was the only other comment from the Building Inspector?
Yes, yes. To the best of my knowledge, at this point, yes. It was the Building Commissioner.
Why don't you read that? It's not very long.
Let me make sure. I want to make sure I have the right thing here. Let's see here. Okay, here it is. So, on November 19th, 2019, I received an email with the understanding that the Building Commissioner and I do have telephone conversations to expedite understanding of some of these topics. Checking in on the status of the Minor Site Plan Review opinion as this type of meeting will help an applicant realize the extent of requirements for a town project as a whole. Can you forward Aldo's opinion to me? I realize the Minor Site Plan Review is targeted for smaller projects, but either way, I was hoping by the first of the year to have all town staff involved at the beginning of the implementation of projects prior to permitting or hearings to discuss town policies, procedures, and requirements. And other staff members were included in this email. So generally, the Building Commissioner, to the best of my understanding, her concern was that, you know, if it's a minor site plan, the department heads all get, you know, first upfront understanding of the project because the applicant has to present the project to the department heads. But to remedy that, we were talking about having, and it's at the suggestion of the Building Commissioner, an informal upfront meeting prior to permitting with the applicant so that we could understand the project, provide advice early on and upfront before they apply so that their applications would be more complete. The plans would include the proper information, they would have advice on the guidelines that are in place, any policies, whether it's street tree guidelines or, I don't know, the Police Chief would identify his issues of concern. The Fire Chief would have a chance to outline, you know, make sure you do X, Y, Z, the roads have to be this wide for access, et cetera. And that would help the applicants provide a more complete application for major site plan review and any special permit to the Planning Board. And going forward with conservation as well as if there was any reason to get a variance or a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. So to end that one long sentence, I think that was generally the concern and efforts of the Building Commissioner that somehow we worked together to put into place some kind of meeting like this ahead of time.
Would that meeting be optional?
Yes. I don't think you can force a meeting like that. But I think a lot of the applicants ask us to do those things. And in fact, they do come into planning and to building department and often we meet together with them. Sometimes it doesn't coordinate and we each meet with them independently. But we do meet with the applicant ahead of time, several times sometimes.
So it would be their choice to decline?
I believe so.
And move forward without it? It's not essential, so they could move forward without it?
Yeah.
So, any questions or comments at this point in the public hearing? Go ahead, Jack. Do you need the microphone, Jack?
John Bottalini for Y.A. Circle. I didn't hear the first part. Somewhere in our zoning, it says that they can't vote on a, on a, on a plan. So where is this?
Here. It's Chapter 9, Section 9-23 of the town code.
The town code?
Yes. It's not in the zoning code, it's in the, in the earlier part of the code.
I have it here.
You've got a page? I don't know.
Yeah, so it's, it's 9-23, residency requirement for voting members of appointed governmental bodies. No person shall serve as a voting member of any appointed board, committee, or commission or other appointed governmental body of the town of Southborough who is not a resident thereof. Non-voting members, if any, shall be considered in determining the presence of a quorum. Shall not be considered.
So this is a carryover? I mean, that isn't a new town code law, is it?
Nope, this is a...
Yes, one's saying yes, one's saying no.
It was just voted in a couple of years ago.
That was voted in a couple of years ago?
This says adopted 4/14/2015 at Town Meeting by Article 23.
Really?
Yep.
And nobody caught it back then? It just seems odd. It's sort of like we're almost six years from that time and nobody's ever seen it.
Well, I can tell you, Jack, from my three years here, this January, I've only had one minor site plan application.
It doesn't happen a lot, I know. And at one point in time, I mean, everybody that worked for the town lived in the town. And I think that was a criteria for being hired. You had to, you had to live in town. And then we did away with that and then we voted this in so that we could, all right. That's all I want to know, that's fine.
Okay.
So we're gonna, at our last meeting, which was before we opened the public hearing, we had this draft ready, thanks to Sarah. And we put it up on the screen and went through it, not word by word, but we went to those paragraphs or sentences where the text was deleted, where some of the text was changed, and some new text was included. The, so it's a little over five pages is this section of the code. But there's only a few sections, a few sentences, a few paragraphs that are changed to incorporate this. It's basically the same except different, different people would be performing the review. So did you want to take us through it, Karina? Sarah?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask Sarah if she'd like to just walk through. And I'll move the screen for you to where you need it.
Thanks. So yeah, so the first kind of update comes under B, Section B. So the Site Plan Review will be processed by one of the following means. And so this section talks about minor review and major review. So at this point, there's a reference kind of midway through the, through the paragraph that indicates that the Site Plan Review Committee will be reviewing those minor plans. And since the intention is to move that under the Planning Board's purview, we've replaced, you know, Site Planner Review Committee with Planning Board and taken out that next kind of longer sentence which just clarifies who used to be on the review committee in the town. So, next one. So the next section, kind of just a little further down, is what Karina kind of had spoke to before. In the bylaw, it specifically stated the number of copies necessary for the minor review. Right now, those copies have changed quite a bit because most of the town departments are receiving those plans digitally, so they don't have to provide as many paper copies. And it's likely that over the years that those will, those numbers will dwindle even more. So right now, it references, you know, the multiple copies per the submission documents, and those are the forms that Karina had spoke to before. So the number of copies will be listed on the submission documents.
And sometimes, they don't always match. The code and the application form has, so the application form comes with instructions. And the instructions say X amount of copies. And then you look back at the older form, at the code, which was prior to that, and the numbers don't match. So this is to try and eliminate that. So you don't have to keep changing the code for the number of copies. It'll be on the application instruction. The application is a form that gets accepted by the Planning Board at a meeting where people can opine on that.
Right. So the applicant will still have that information, obviously, prior to submission because it'll be on the form. The next is B of that same section. Again, kind of taken out completely because it references minor plan review and the committee, and how the committee will elevate or escalate any discrepancies to the Planning Board. So since the Planning Board is going to be the overseeing entity at this point, that's C, we just reiterated for clarification that Minor Site Plan Review is not a public hearing. So as it wasn't before, it's still not going to be a public hearing. So not subject to butter notifications, which can be quite costly to the applicant. Next is B again. And it's just making sure that there's continuity between the Site Plan Review, both minor and major. So we took out that first line, but it's really still reiterating what needs to be prepared on the plans. So the features and the size of the submission. So C, for minor and major site plan approval, was added there. And then a complete form and filing fee of copies of all submissions shall be submitted to the office of the Planning Board in accordance with the instructions on the application form. So again, that reference to number of copies has been stricken, and the reference to the instructions on the application form has been put in.
Sarah, did you reference part three? Right before C? Did you talk about that one?
No, sorry. So, so yeah, for, for three, kind of going back up to what I missed. Incomplete applications, so incomplete applications, the completeness shall be based on the requirements of the respective subsections for minor or major. So again, if it's a minor review, it will have a few less requirements versus a major. So then...
And that's just clarification. So in part three right there, it was just to clarify. It doesn't change what we do now, it's just... It doesn't change what we do now. It's just making it clear for the person who reads the bylaw.
Right. There's also a reference to applicants being provided notice by certified mail once their submission was complete at this point. Again, moving towards a digital era, it's typically by email that the applicants receive that confirmation that it's complete.
Or deficiencies that they have...
Or deficient.
That they have to address.
Complete or not. So, we covered C. So, on to D. Again, these are just minor, changing the words allowed and to shall provide. This section was one large run-on sentence. And so, what we did was added a few semicolons to kind of break up that thought and make it more clear to the applicant exactly what was required. So, again, relatively minor revisions here in this section. For E, the planning board shall hold a public hearing on the application for major site plan approval. So, again, lending that clarity, that only major site plan approval requires that public hearing notice. F, same thing. The planning board shall act on a complete application for major, and within sixty days, the recipient of a complete application. So, we want to make sure that the time clock doesn't start when the first submission comes in if that submission is incomplete. It's only once the submission is fully complete that, that clock starts. Down under H, again, eliminating a reference to site plan review committee and replacing it with planning board. And that is it.
Very good. So, that's the second time that we've gone over that in public, once before the public hearing and now during the public hearing. So, are there any questions or comments at this point in the public hearing? Go ahead, Jack. Anybody?
I've got a few.
Sure. Mr. Bartolini.
John Bartolini for Y.A. Circle. Did anybody give it any thought to, instead of changing the zoning, to just change the town code to allow them to vote only in a minor sub, uh, minor site plan review? Why didn't you just change that one, since it was the newest one and voted in so recently? It would have been simple, just say...
I just know that when we, that this, the minor, we, we've had so few of these.
You don't have a lot, and they're very small, and I, I do agree with you. And nine times out of ten, I don't fall under this. But it's usually, I mean, it gets kind of onerous now. It's saying you gotta have a registered engineer, and you gotta do this, and you gotta do that to pave your parking lot, or to change some landscape, or something minor. And you didn't have to do that before.
I think since I've been here, we've required, even for minor, that the minor site plan application we did did have to be stamped by an engineer, because it does get reviewed also by the engineering consultant.
It's, the, the minor site plan review committee was, that concept was not fully embraced by everyone. That was a bit controversial. And the board at the time, you know, the town planner thought it was a good idea to give it a try. So, the board, at least from my point of view, reluctantly said, okay, let's give it a try. Because the, the difference between the number of site plans that the planning board review, major site plans, the, the number of those compared to the total number of major and minor is, what, one in the last three years. So, it was felt that the board, there's no reason, there's no real necessity to create a whole new board and just let this board do it.
Well, that brings me to my next question, is that you come here from minor, but then the, the minor subdivision, the minor site plan, if you, I believe if one person voted against it, then it went before the planning board. So, how does the voting work now? Is it gonna be a hundred percent, or is it a majority on a minor, or is it, and then again, is, is, where is the appeal? The appeal, if you're not happy with your minor, you can appeal to the major, but it, that, that, all that has been stricken out. So, it's like, where is the...
Well, the appeal of anything that the planning board does relative to zoning is in court. You have to go to court.
Well, if you're doing a minor, you can up it one grade to, to a ma, a major. If the way I understood it, is that if, if one person didn't like, what, what one out of the, out of the review committee didn't like it, it would get kicked to the planning board and become a, a major review.
So, now it's one-stop shopping. You're already at the planning board.
So...
First of all...
Yeah, that's exactly what I mean. It gets confused, I mean...
If I can add something to that. Minor site plan review is not a public hearing.
So, that's the only difference?
Now. And it's not proposed to be a public hearing...
Oh, and I agree with that, that's fine.
After. So, if, for some reason, the consensus, what I believe would be major, a simple majority, three of the five, if they voted against it, the applicant would have to go change his plan or mitigate the plan during the process, come back again.
So, it'd still be under a minor, it'd just be...
Right. If, right now, when you have a minor site plan application, in the site plan review committee, one of the eight members, if it's eight, if I recall...
Yeah, there's a lot.
Yeah, there's a lot, right. It's every, yeah, it's more than five. If one of them votes no, and I chair that committee, and if I voted no, it would be passed, it would have to move to the planning board under the same process.
Oh, it goes under the same process?
So, it, it, in, in essence, we're just taking it to that process right now. It's not a public hearing. It's a discussion, or so to speak. It's not a public hearing. Butters don't get notified, there's no legal ad. And if they're, if, you know, if the, if the plan is deficient in some sort, and the planning board votes against it, I think you either condition the approval to where it meets the, you know, the requirements that the code requires, or you take your application and go, and rework it, or change your project, or...
Okay. All right. I guess that's all I have right now. I was just curious about those.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Jack.
Any other questions or comments? So, Mr. Stein.
Under the current system, is there a notification to a butters for a minor modification?
No, there is not.
And, so, the current members of the site plan review committee, would they have any involvement at all in a minor?
They could come and provide, well, typically, when we get an application at the planning department, we distribute it to the department heads. So, and we have a full list. It goes to town council, it goes to board of selectmen, it goes to zoning board of appeals chair, goes to public works, it goes to police department, goes to the fire chief, goes to open space preservation commission, it goes to committee, it goes to the new, it will be going from municipal projects to the ADA committee, which is newly formed. It copy, is not necess, required to be sent to town clerk now because it's not a public hearing, but we could make it available to him so he's aware that we have that application. And that's all done electronically. So, all the department heads receive information. Then they can attend the agenda item and provide input or provide comment through memo or email, which I would then present, or Sarah would present here.
And that would continue, just without a formal?
Yeah. We do it, we would do it now, we would do it then.
So, in the section for minor plan review, paragraph A, when it talks about the complete application form filing fee and multiple copies, how would an applicant know how many copies are supposed to be provided and facilitated?
With the application form, and I'll have to check with the minor site plan application. They both have them, yeah. So, when you go to the town website, or you come to our office, and you get a copy of the application, whether it's minor or major, there is a one-page set of instructions that indicates, you know, what the application is, and the requirements as far as a butter notification, number of copies, timeframe in which they have to submit things, those types of things. It's all in an instruction page that's attached to the application.
So, it's noted on that?
It is.
So, and then just further down that page, minor site plan review is not a public hearing. The planning board shall approve or disapprove all submittals for minor plan review within thirty days of a completed application to the office of the planning board. So, after thirty days, if the planning board has taken no action, does that constructively approved?
Hold on, let me ask that, let me just think for a second.
Should we consider adding some kind of language that clarifies that?
Yeah. In the one that we had in the last three years, it didn't get, we acted on it. So, that's the same thing, I know. I have to think about this for a second. The planning shall, for thirty days, a complete application to the office of the planning board. I'm gonna have to check precedents to see what happened prior to the last three years because there were several other minor site plans throughout the last ten or fifteen years. This may be twelve. So, I can see, I don't think that any, I'm not aware of anything that didn't get acted on, but it should be clear.
So, Mr. Chair, I mean, rather than having the town planner go through, sifting through all that stuff, could we just add a sentence that clarifies that?
That would probably be the best. Because then it's clear from here going forward if this passes a town meeting. Right. I should say when.
What did you just add to this now?
Go ahead, Jack. Uh, back to the mic, please.
John Bartolini for Y.A. Circle. What did, what did you add to this now?
So, Jack, um... Thanks. On the second page, toward the bottom, it says minor site plan review is not a public hearing, yada, yada. Then it says, the planning board shall approve or disapprove in the thirty days of a completed application. And all I was asking was, if the planning board took no action within that thirty-day period, would it be constructively approved?
Okay. Well, I didn't hear the answer, I'm sorry.
The answer, well, rather than have the town planner sift through precedents, I was just saying, why don't we add a sentence that says it'll be constructively approved?
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't hear it all.
So, um...
Let me just see something here.
And I, I think Mr. Bartolini brought up a good point, too, about if, I think we should clearly state the number of votes we're looking for for approval. Is just three, the simple majority. I think that would be beneficial, and that if it is, maybe while we're doing that, add a simple line about, you know, you work with the planning board for a second revision, but it's not...
Yeah.
It's not the one meeting. But I guess that gets into the thirty days. So, if we're gonna meet a couple of times, it might go beyond the thirty days. I don't know what the proper wording is for extensions and whatnot, but if it, there's a little...
Something that talks about granting an extension beyond the thirty days.
Right.
Yeah. I'd like to have an opportunity to talk to town council about this...
I totally agree.
Once we have this, because, um...
I'm not trying to say we have to have it for tonight because I think, you know, we'd, in typical fashion of the planning board, we'd want to make sure we have the wording correct, and could present it, say, here's the final version at the next meeting. So, but I just think that it was a good point, Mr. Bartolini brought it to have.
Yeah, just tell me one more time the, the section that you were just talking about.
So, it was first on just number of votes...
C. Oh, number of votes, yeah, that's it. Clarify number of votes.
The other piece was if, if we are going to, say it's constructively approved, if no action's done in the thirty days, but if we're working with the applicant, that there is an extension process that we, we'd follow until we take a vote.
If continue meeting, then we would have some kind of an extension request process.
Right.
Yeah, got it. Two, three. Yeah, that makes sense. Sarah, do you have any input on those, those comments? The comments were, if the planning board...
Yeah.
Does not act in thirty days, that we clarify it's constructively approved?
Yeah, I think, you know, that provision isn't existing in the current bylaw. So, I think that it would definitely help to lend clarity to the section overall. And I think that, again, clarifying the number of votes, you know, would be really helpful as well. Because it sounds like it would be a simple majority for the minor and a super majority for the major, correct?
No, major is still, is simple, too.
Major is one of those.
Yeah, it's the special permits.
Special permit, that's what I was thinking of.
Otherwise, it's just... Okay. And then the, a process for an extension, something in there that we can add. And then we'll supply this language to the planning board members and to town council to update what he has. Maybe just to make sure it's appropriate, that it doesn't impact something else.
We want to continue the hearing?
Yes.
To the tenth?
Correct.
So, is there any other questions or comments? Based on the excellent discussion and comments that we received so far, and then getting feedback and incorporating them or not must be within the public hearing. So, it would be appropriate to continue this public hearing. Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to extend the public hearing for annual town meeting warrant article, amend section one seven four dash ten, site plan approval, to February tenth, two thousand and twenty, at seven oh five P.M.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Favor? Public hearing is continued. Is there anyone here, we have four public hearings posted tonight, and that was the first one. The fourth one has to do with the downtown overlay district. Is there anyone here for that? That's the, that's, it's indicated as a seven twenty public hearing, but we're way past that now. That one, that, the public hearing will be opened, there's a defective process involved in that that we'll get into when the time, when we get to that. So, if there's someone here waiting for that, or at home, we'll get to that. But there'll be, that article is gonna wind up being pulled out. And we have more detail when we get to that point. So, the next item on the agenda is a, is a public hearing for town meeting warrant article to amend section one seventy, sections one seventy-four dash nine, special permit requirements, one seventy-four dash eighteen exemptions, and one seventy-four dash nineteen, extensions or alterations. We'll ask the town planner to read the public hearing notice.
Okay. This is the public hearing notice for the town of Southborough dated January seventh, two thousand and twenty. Pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General laws, chapter forty-eight, section five, the Southborough Planning Board will hold public hearings on Monday, January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty, beginning at seven oh five P.M. in the Thomas J. McCall of Hearing Room, second floor of the Townhouse, Seventeen Common Street, Southborough, Mass., oh one seven seven two, for the following seven ten P.M. annual town meeting warrant article to amend sections one seventy-four dash nine, special permit requirements... to amend sections 174-9, special permit requirements, 174-10, 18, excuse me, section 174-18 exemptions, and section 174-19, extensions or alterations, zoning bylaw to reflect current case law. The revision is intended to provide additional clarity regarding non-conforming structures. A copy of the proposed language can be viewed in the Office of the Zoning Board of Appeals, 9 Corderville Road, Southborough, Mass., 01772. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposed language should be here, appear at the time and place designated. Sincerely, Donald C. Morris, Chair, Southborough Planning Board. Let me just close this.
Thank you, that was the public hearing notice. We'll ask the town planner to give us the background on this article. And then, is there someone from ZBA that's gonna?
I'm just here to answer questions if anybody has any.
Okay, so we'll rely, we'll rely on the paid town planner to do that
Update.
update and overview, and then we'll just, we'll open it up to questions, or we'll go through it like we did with the previous article on the screen noting the changes. Does that sound okay?
Um, just, give me one second, I just wanna set it up so everybody can see. Sometimes technology's not faster. Okay. So this, um, this zoning bylaw amendment is being sponsored by the Zoning Board of Appeals, who is an entity outlined in Mass. General Law that section C. 48, Chapter 48, Section 5, indicates who is allowed to sponsor and bring bylaw amendments to the Board of Selectmen, who in turn notifies the planning board, and then we hold a public hearing. We received information from Building Department's Katie Perry, who helps administer the Zoning Board of Appeals during their public hearings and discussions and such, that the Zoning Board was interested in clarifying sections of the bylaw that they had recently run into some issues with, with an applicant regarding some structures that were in place and non-conforming and that wanted to be renovated, and whether they had to get a new permit, revise it if they were allowed to do that. So, first we got a copy from town council's opinion regarding the Zoning Board's appeals request to find out if they are the people who are, if that board is supposed to sponsor an article like this and if it's in their jurisdiction to do so, which he opined you do. So that's all set. And then Katie Barry and Sarah worked together. Katie kinda spearheaded it, and Sarah helped her along to come up with the changes that you see here, and then I'll let Sarah go into the details of what those changes are.
Sure, again, this is a relatively minor adjustment to provide additional clarity when it comes to alterations or reconstruction or otherwise structural changes to an existing non-conforming structure. So really, this is talking about one-to-one replacement. So if you purchase a home, it's already grandfathered in as non-conforming, and it has something like a deck or some kind of other structure on the property, that that can be replaced with a one-to-one replacement without going through the special permit process, just by pulling a regular building permit. So, going through 174-9, special permit requirements E. So here, striking or alterations to add reconstruction or otherwise structural change. Again, a little bit further down, same thing, adding reconstruction or otherwise structural change. There is a provision at the end, "No special permit under this subsection shall be granted for non-conforming signs subject to Chapter 93, 93D of Mass. General Law." Again, that is kind of speaking more to signage on highways and such. Not really sure why that line was in there kind of in the first place. Perhaps the ZBA can kind of give some more clarity there. 174-18 actually has no revisions. 174-19, again, same changes that you saw up in nine. So, striking the or, adding reconstruction or structural changes. Again, adding the reconstruction or structural changes made. "Any alteration, extension, reconstruction, or structural change not listed in subsection B. 1, 2, 3, or 4 will require an application to the Board of Appeals." So while we're clarifying what does not require an application to the ZBA, we're also simultaneously clarifying what will require a application to the ZBA. Under B. 1, again, adding that same phrase, extension, construction, or structural change. Same thing with 2 and 3. And adding 4, again, for additional clarity. "Alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change as proposed in constructed, does not intensify any existing nonconformity or result in any additional nonconformity." So something that would result in additional nonconformity would have to go through that special permit process. Pretty straightforward.
I think the gist, and Katie and, or Craig can correct me, but I think the gist was that if you have, say, like a non-conforming deck and you wanted to repair it, and you're not making it any more non-conforming, pushing it more into the setback, which made it non-conforming, and you're just putting it back in the same footprint that you wouldn't have to go back for another special permit, that it could be handled with a building permit, because you already have the deck, you're using it, so to speak. You're not making it bigger, so therefore, just get a building permit.
Mr. Nicholson, welcome back, welcome to the planning board.
Good evening. Good evening, Craig Nicholson, Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Yeah, the main situation we came with is when it was more than just a repair, where you're like changing the railing, but you need to take it completely down and then put it all the way back up, so that's the reconstruct portion, which is what caused us some grief before. So, you know, in general, if you were just replacing the rail, whatever, probably wouldn't even be noticed, but the whole taking it down and putting it back in the same footprint was, was what was confusing and conflicting in the code, and that's what's being corrected. Thanks. Any other questions?
Any questions or comments, Mr. Stein?
"No special permits under this subsection shall be granted for non-conforming signs." So, why was that stricken?
Signs are covered elsewhere. I forget the, I was looking at it earlier, but there's a different section for signed special permits. So, that was a note in there, like, it wasn't saying that you could use, get a sign, it was saying you couldn't, and they're specifically handled in a different section of the code.
And Sarah and I did look at the Mass. General Law, what pertains to more highway signs, and then we looked at the signed bylaw, and we felt confident that that, we understood what you were saying.
Yeah, it's covered significantly in the signage section of the code.
Which is 174-11.
But it does, so the sign doesn't, the sign code doesn't specifically reference these chapters of Mass. General Law, so I'm just wondering why, why they were there.
I have no idea why they were there, they were there for a very long time, and now this updated language removes them.
Okay.
Yes, Aldo has received a copy of this to opine on, so if he feels that perhaps it should be put back into the code, you know, we'll obviously put it back.
Or that reference put into the sign section. We'll see what he has to say.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Jack?
Just regards the signs. Don, maybe you can remember this, but is this in here in case somebody wanted to change your sign? So you have a non-conforming, pre-existing sign, been there forever, and now you wanna alter it or do something to it, is that why this is here?
I don't know, Jack, I'm looking at the date here, it says 1986.
You are on the board.
Right. But since then, we either created or completely replaced the sign section, if you remember. Jimmy Falcone led that group that I thought did a great job updating the sign section of the code. And so this may have, this may have been put in there due to deficiencies in that other deficiencies or absence of anything. And then when the new sign section was created, we didn't, we didn't go back and delete this. I don't know the answer.
I don't either.
Also, just to point out, I think because this section refers to structures, right? Non-conforming uses lots and structures. If you look in the definition of a structure under the zoning code, I wanted to check, I thought that it references signs here. "A man-made combination of materials assembled in a fixed location to give support or shelter or for any other purpose, including buildings, frameworks, platforms, sheds, and the like, provided that signs, utility poles, and small decorative or accessory structures not over three feet in height or six feet in any dimensions such as sculptures, mailboxes, birdbath benches, and the like, shall not be subject to the yard requirements of this chapter if located at least five feet from the side rail." So it may have something to do with signs considered a structure over those sizes.
I don't know.
Right, there's another, you know, because in some towns, signs are considered structures. Some towns, they're not. But, um, hopefully, town council will opine if that's appropriate to remove that or not, yeah.
Could you ask him specifically to, to look at that?
Yes.
I just, I'm leery of making changes that we don't know really what they mean. Like, it's been there, I don't think it's caused a problem, but I don't know why it was there and...
What the intent was.
What the intent was, and removing it without knowing that is...
I'll, we'll send him a follow-up email to append the legal opinion request. Well, yeah, he's reviewing his town warrant article language, so there was no official legal opinion request, but we'll add one, send it to him.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments tonight on this? The ZBA is in first place for the briefest article. Especially, especially compared to the next one that we're gonna do.
Game to please.
So, since we, we're, from the input we got tonight and our discussion about getting some clarification from town council, we would need to leave the public hearing open in order to receive that and go over it in public. So, Mr. Mills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we extend the public hearing for annual town meeting warrant article. Amend sections 174-9, special permit requirements, 174-18 exemptions, and 174-19, extensions and alterations, to February 10th, 2020, at 7:10 PM.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and any discussion? All in favor? We're, public hearing is continued, thank you. Next item on the agenda.
Can I just ask Craig one question? Do you, does Aldo need to know that 174-18 exemption has no changes? Is that what you said before? I just wanted to make sure that was clear, and we can talk about it next time, but just, I'm not sure. There were no changes there, and we keep referencing that bylaw.
I'm, we can ask Aldo when you ask him the other question.
Okay, 'cause I, yeah, I just noticed that, too. Thanks, okay. Sorry, I just wanna make sure.
Okay, so, that was continued. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Town warrant article to update section 174-12.1, outdoor illumination. We'll ask the town planner to read the public hearing notice.
Okay. This is the public hearing notice, town of Southborough, January 7th, 2020, dated. Pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 48, Section 5 of the Southborough Section 5, "The Southborough Planning Board will hold public hearings on Monday, January 27th, 2020, beginning at 7:05 PM in the Thomas J. McCall of Hearing Room, second floor of the Townhouse, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass., 01772, for the following 7:15 PM, annual town meeting warrant article to update sections 174-12.1, outdoor illumination zoning bylaw. The revision is intended to replace the current bylaw entirely. A copy of the proposed language can be viewed in the Office of the Planning Board at the Southborough Townhouse. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposed language should appear at the time and place designated. Sincerely, Donald C. Morris, Chair, Southborough Planning Board." And I have an update for you.
So the public hearing notice has been read, and is there anyone here for the next agenda item, which is the downtown overlay district? I spoke earlier about that public hearing will be open, but it will not remain open. Details when we get to that item on the agenda. So we'll ask the town planner to give us the background on the outdoor illumination proposed bylaw.
And I just also wanna point out that for these public hearings, the ads were published in the newspaper as legally required on January 13th and January 20th, which was confirmed in order to hold the public hearings this evening. Also, the towns and the local, the local abutting towns and the agencies as required were also sent a legal notification. All right. All right, currently, the zoning code, section 174-12.1, outdoor illumination, exists. Back in April of 2019, the planning board invited Mr. Deston Howman, Southborough resident and also a professor at WPI with knowledge on lighting and dark skies initiatives, to present on blue light reduction in town. In May to June of 2019, the planning board contracted with Mr. Howman to draft a bylaw language for blue light reduction to present draft to the planning board. Following that, in August of 2019, he presented the draft lighting bylaw changes that he prepared to the planning board. So, beginning in April 2019, Mr. Howman originally presented his information, and then following, in August 2019, he presented a bylaw draft to begin understanding how we could improve the outdoor illumination to promote dark skies, less lighting pollution, protect habitat, nature. You'll be able to say it more eloquently than I am, and for health. In September 2019, the planning board initiated a working group that consisted of Mr. Howman- the Planning Board initiated a working group that consisted of Mr. Heilman, Planning Board member Marney Houlihan, and my assistant Sarah Hecker, in order to further update the bylaw for outdoor illumination. In the interim, the working group uh-oh. Something happened. Sorry.
There's a blue light joke going around the table here.
Uh-oh, here we go, here we go. Okay, sorry, this is a new application to run this, so we don't need a device over here. Oh geez, Louise. Let's see. Where did it go? Hold on. Bear with me. Just launch that again, Sarah? Oh, here it is, okay. Do you remember what it was? Thank goodness.
Eight, seven, six.
No, it's looking for a new one. Click here. Hold on. Training room, training room, police chief, fire chief, interpen. That's public safety. I'm sorry, let me just try this again. I think I launched it again, did I? How do I close this? Quit. Oh. Here it is. Share screen. It moved really quick on you. Add screen. Now we got two. And then Yeah. How do I close this out?
Mr. Mills?
Make a motion for a two-minute recess.
Sorry.
Second.
Motion's been made in second and any discussion, seeing none, all in favor, we're adjourned. Two minutes.
Alright, terribly sorry.
Planning Board is back in session after two-minute recess. The town planner was bringing up the visual on the screen. We'll ask the town planner to continue with the background on this warrant article.
Okay, so where I ended off was fall of last year. The working group was created in order to do some research and refine language for a potential warrant article, which they've done, they've met several times. They also met with the building commissioner and the facilities director in order to review the bylaw language with them. We did receive, just to point out that in November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, the lighting bylaw was a discussion item on the planning, on the planning board agenda, again on December second, again on December sixteenth, discussion number three. And then again on January sixth, the Planning Board had it as a discussion item on the agenda. So we've been working towards this point. We received comments from facilities on January sixth, which we can read as part of the public hearing. On January ninth, the working group met again with Lori Lavoli and John Parent. That's the meeting I was talking about. On January tenth of this year, the draft language was provided to the town administrator to forward to town council for a review of the draft bylaw language. In addition, we provided a legal opinion request asking the town council to opine on a matter of whether the existing outdoor illumination bylaw was applicable to residential lots. So that we could carry the same applicability in the new bylaw in order not to make too much change. I also received a telephone call from the building commissioner on the twenty-fourth with some concerns she had with the bylaw. And I believe also today, we received an updated review letter from facilities, Mr. John Parent, and also from the building commissioner, which brings us to this public hearing this evening. And all that information can be reviewed.
Very good.
And we'll bring up this information, and Sarah worked closely as part of the working group. So she's extremely informed on this, and she's the best person to describe how, where the bylaw is now.
Sure. So we
Why don't we ask Dr. Heilman to come to the microphone? 'Cause we know Sarah's gonna pull him in.
Yes, I am.
Like a blue light.
Yes, I am.
Sarah.
Okay. So we've prepared a very brief presentation, just to kind of highlight a little bit of the process. You know, Destin had obviously presented to this board a much more extensive version of why this is so important. So we're kinda gonna keep it brief so that we can focus on the wording and the verbiage in the bylaw itself. So Karina's got the ma- maybe. It's about, it's like five slides. So I, it's not like it's terribly in depth. Karina's got the
Just, you can sit up.
I'll just, I'll grab it.
Use that microphone.
Okay. So, in Southborough, light pollution has increased thirty-three percent since two thousand and seventeen. So you can see, unfortunately, the colors are a little less bright on the projection. But the orange, you know, kind of redder colors are more intense light areas. And then the green, which you can kind of barely see in the two thousand nineteen projection, are lighter, are lower lighting levels. So you can see where kind of the change is. Yeah, please.
To point out, this was two years ago. And correct me if I'm wrong, Destin, these darker areas show more intense lighting, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it's not, it's not really clear on the projection. In fact, there's actually a red dot in the middle of the twenty nineteen, right smack in the middle of Southborough that I can't even see on here. But if you look at the, I think the easiest way to see it is if you look at where our water is in town, you can actually tell where it's at in twenty seventeen, and it's much less visible in twenty nineteen. And I think, are we be posting this too?
We will be.
Okay, yeah. But if you look at the numbers, the sum that's up there is the quantified light pollution that's there. We've gone from, it's in an arbitrary unit, from fourteen thirty-eight to nineteen seventeen, thirty-three percent increase. We do have data back as far as twenty twelve, but because they adjusted some settings on the satellites that capture this, it can't be compared apples to apples. So this is, but it's pretty dramatic even for three years.
So, again, this is, you know, a kind of condensed slide that Destin had presented in a previous meeting. So the American Medical Association encourages the use of three thousand Kelvin or lower lighting for outdoor installations such as roadways. All lighting should be properly shielded to minimize glare and detrimental and environmental effects. And consideration should be given to utilize the ability of LED lighting to be dimmed for off-peak time periods. So some of the negative effects of having this bright white light in the evening are that it suppresses melatonin, it disrupts the sleep cycle, it's linked to many diseases, and it has extreme detrimental impacts to nocturnal animals, of which sixty percent of animals are nocturnal. So it definitely has a heavy environmental impact. So the update process, what we did is we took a look at the existing bylaw regulations, and we updated those with clinical best practices to create the new outdoor illumination. There are several sections in the bylaw that were not changed at all. So we assessed that current bylaw, maintaining purpose, applicability, exterior lighting, flickering, and lighting levels, all as written currently in the bylaw. We omitted out-of-date parameters and replaced that with updated language around best practices. And we created a new rules and regulations document to offer guidance on how to implement these changes. So these are relatively easy solutions. That kind of hot white light that comes from LEDs over four thousand Kelvin can simply be replaced with a cooler bulb at twenty-seven thousand Kelvin, three thousand Kelvin, to kind of bring down those blue lights. So the impacts of this update, we'll see reduced light pollution. So lowering those LED lighting levels will increase a healthier, kind of safer environment for both humans and wildlife in Southborough. It actually increases flexibility for development because the new parameters are based on overall site illumination. And those clear guidelines will help to make sure that this regulation is implemented, you know, that the transition to implementing this new updated regulation and bylaw kind of seamless in the end. That's it.
So at the beginning, we talked about replacing the section outdoor illumination, one seventy-four dash twelve point one, replacing it in its entirety with this new proposal. So, the first thing that I did, seeing that it was more than one or two pages, was to count the pages. And it spills over into a seventh, a very small amount, only a couple of sentences, into a seventh page. Essentially, it's six pages. And so, looking at the current bylaw, it takes up four pages. So, I asked what caused the growth in page numbers. And And I wanna maybe ask if Sarah ca- I know some of that, simple answer is clearer formatting.
Yes.
Taking it from less easy to read paragraphs and putting it into bullets.
Bullet points.
Which causes the, the document to become longer. So I'll let you explain the, the reasons why it's grown from four pages to essentially six, including not just the formatting, but the word growth.
Sure. So for example, the purpose, section A, purpose, has not been changed at all. There is no verbiage changes, no updates. The difference is that under purpose, you have several provisions, one through seven, which are all currently combined into one kind of long paragraph. And now, at this point, they're called out in individual bullet points, just to make it easier to read and easier to understand. Same thing with applicability, where it once was one kind of large dense paragraph. It's now called out with bullet points that highlight the exceptions to that applicability statement. So that's, that's created some length there. The definitions section has been adjusted to include newer language. So where the definitions have all been brought over from the old bylaw, we've added additional definitions. So one of the new ones, for example, is correlated color temperature, which was not in the old bylaw. Bug rating, which is new, so that's the rating that the whole system is kind of based on. And so bug san- it's an acronym that stands for backlight, uplight, and glare. So that, you know, definitely added some length. The addition of section D, which are calling out the lighting zones. Through this new update, there are zones by which you can regulate the amount of lighting. So we've defined, the working group defined those zones per the current zoning map in the town of Southborough. So Z zero has no ambient light, Z one has low ambient light, Z two has moderate ambient light, and Z three has moderately high ambient light. And so in section E, we talked about where those zones will exist in town. So Z zero is going to be under conservation and research and science and professional zones. Z one will be located for residential A and B. Z two will be in the business village. And then Z three will be on business highway, industrial, and industrial park zones. Exterior lighting plan has remained the same with some additional components. Again, in reference to that bug rating system being the new guidance moving forward in terms of best practices. The lighting control requirements is also a new section. And that is referencing the dimming of those LED lights for industrial and commercial purposes when it makes sense. So if there's a business that's open twenty-four hours, obviously, we wouldn't ask them to dim their lights, you know, if they're still operating business. But if there is a business that's closed in the evening, we would ask that they would dim those lights to a safe level. Safety is very important to the working group, and we are not trying to implement any kind of standard that would put anyone in harm's way in the evening. IES, you know, the regulatory body that we look to, to write this bylaw, also is very clear that these provisions will not put anyone in harm's way in the evening. That they, that they won't be so low, that the lighting won't be so low that there is, you know, safety risk. So section I is about community and outdoor recreational lighting requirements. So this is for kind of larger, you know, stadium lighting, for things like baseball fields, for high schools, you know, middle schools, those types of things. And again, there are regulations and criteria developed by IES that are not quite the same as they are for residential properties. So we've taken those into consideration, put those in the bylaw so that there is some parameter by which to regulate those lights as well. The light shield for parking lot illumination is new. Flickering and flashing lights is a section that was already existing in the bylaw. Absolute height is another section that was also existing in the bylaw, but we have kind of condensed it a little bit to meet kind of those high points, where it used to have a small animation, not animation, but graphic, where there used to be a small graphic. We've removed that and just, you know, put in those absolute heights. Lighting levels, that again is another section that is the same, word for word, as the current and existing bylaw, as well as light trespass limitations. That's also the same as the existing bylaw.
I just want to point out and add to that, that these six and a half pages of the proposed bylaw that Sarah just went through, this document here, let me just find it for you. This document here, which we put up on the screen initially, this one seventy-four dash twelve, this is what is existing. This is, represents, even though it's all marked up, this represents the current existing outdoor illumination bylaw. And where it has orange highlights through it, all that language is in the new bylaw. So you can see as I scroll through here, all the paragraphs that are highlighted in orange here carried over to the new, the proposed draft-
Yes.
-bylaw.
Yep.
And the new bylaw, the proposed bylaw has some additional features. But you can see how much of the structure is remaining the same. And this is the graphic that Sarah was talking about, that instead of showing it graphically like this, it's now just in a narrative, describing that twenty feet is the maximum height anywhere without a variance from the zoning board, which is the same as the current bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
So you can see how much of the existing bylaw was transferred over and used for the new bylaw, which was then supplemented with some updated features. And now has a proposed regulation that describes the technical things that applicants have to address to meet the lighting standards. We did receive comments. We received a letter today from the facilities director, John Parent. He had a concern with a section regarding a five-year compliance timeframe, which is in the section. Let me just show you which section we're talking about.
Yeah, it's in the applicability section. And so it reads, "The replacement of existing fixtures shall be subject to the provisions of this section. Outdoor illumination that exists at the time of this bylaw acceptance will be provided a grace period of five years from the date of inception to comply with this bylaw as described herein."
So in, in getting feedback from the building department, building commissioner and from Facilities, and Facilities oversees the school properties and the streetlights and those types of things, they were very concerned of this language, saying that in five years, everyone had to comply to this bylaw, which would create, in a sense, a non-conformance to properties that are conforming right now. So this, you know, the working group discussed this, I believe, and you can talk more to it if you like. But I think that th- th- this paragraph was not well-received by those two departments, who are very concerned that, you know, how do you enforce this? And who pays for, you know, if the schools need to update all their lights and the ball fields and all the municipal facilities in town, how do you cover that cost? And it's a, it's a valid concern. So I'll let you talk to that. And the other item that is a little bit more controversial with this by- proposed bylaw amendment is whether or not it applies to residential lots. So one family, two family, the existing bylaw, it's not clear. So we provided, we asked town council to provide a legal opinion on if this does apply to residential properties in town. So we're waiting to hear back on that. In the meantime, Sarah did some research. There's another town who has the identical bylaw, the way it exists now, the way we have it now, and they interpreted it that it does. I read through it several times, and it appears that it does apply to the residential population because it references that anybody who has to go through site plan, you have to meet the criteria, and it'll be vetted through site plan. And anyone else who uses a, a light bulb that is sixty watts or more on an exterior spotlight or luminaire, as it says in the bylaw, or has any other outdoor lighting that's a hundred and twenty watt light bulb or more, is subject to this existing bylaw. And it further describes it by lot. So when you look at the very last line of the bylaw, it talks about light trespass. And it says, "You will not have light trespass off your lot." And a lot appears to be a lot, whether it's residential use or commercial use or industrial. So I'm speaking to this because that's what's existing now. And the idea is to keep the same applicability you have now in the proposed bylaw.
Correct.
So we're trying to find out if it does real, um, apply to residential, then the, the proposed bylaw will have the same language, just as it is proposed right now.
One thing for certain, the existing bylaw does not explicitly exempt residential properties. Because there is a section, you know, under applicability that calls out exemptions, and it's not listed.
In the current bylaw.
In the current bylaw.
Right. And again, the, the whole idea is to keep it applying to the same groups that it applies to now. The whole idea of the bylaw update with the new lighting is to reduce blue light and to reduce light shed and light pollution, which the rules and regulations that have been created address. So that it's a little bit different way of looking at it, but it, it's really, applies to everything the way it applies now. It's just a new way to read the information. So there'll be a little bit of learning curve, and, you know, we have contracted Dustin to continue, should the bylaw pass with any changes that come up through the public hearings, that he'll provide some training to the planning board members in order to be up to speed exactly on, you know, when applications come in, what we might look for, and how does it apply to them. And we'll under- we understand it now, but it'll just be a reinforcement.
We also intend to do some additional public listening sessions. Dates and times to be determined, to make sure that everyone, you know, has had an opportunity to really hear why this revision is proposed.
I just wanted to add that I think a lot of this comes back to being good citizens of this earth. And what we're trying to do is be forward thinkers and really try to apply, you know, governments have put regulations on emissions reductions. There's a requirement to do that by big manufacturers. We feel as, you know, elected members that it's important to really think about our environment. So this lighting bylaw does that, and I think it's the first step to be able to support an effort for Southborough to really be forward-thinking and take a step into the future to really help preserve our environment and our world. And so, you know, I know I'm, I'm very committed to trying to make the right decisions. I think it's important, whether the applicability is there or not, however that's deemed, I think as, you know, citizens of the town, it's important to be mindful and learn about the blue lights and change lighting if it's an opportunity. The reason why we put a grace period in is because people do have budget cycles, and they can plan for making changes into their, their own budgets to be able to think forward, in a forward way, and to plan for events like changing out light fixtures or the costs associated with being environmentally conscious. And it may cost money, but I think it's our obligation.
There are, there's also current legislation in the Massachusetts State House to reduce blue light statewide. And to that end, eighteen different states, as well as the District of Columbia and Puerto Rico, have all adopted similar blue light reduction legislation for their states.
Just to clarify, I think it's they've adopted light pollution laws of some kind, some of which include the, the newer LED things, because the AMA came out with a report in twenty sixteen, so it's relatively new. But yeah, there's identical bills in the House and the Senate right now, coming down the pipe. So, so this is something that's, that's happening at the state level. There's a lot of support for it.
Just one addition. Sarah, in her overview, spoke about the IES, which is the Illuminating Engineering Society. And that's kind of the, the very smart, capable people who study this and put draft language together and really help think about guidelines and support that. There's also the Dark Skies Initiative, which is also kind of a global initiative. So we haven't sat down and kind of made up this stuff. It all exists. And there's a, there's a, a big change in how developers need to think about their photometric plans, and it adopts a lot of that new technology into this, this bylaw. And it's not specifically attributed to certain things. We've used this accompanying rules and regulations as a guidepost for people as they think about the bylaw, how to use the technical specificities. And the reason why we broke the technical specificities out of the bylaw was because it's, it's a lot easier to change the rules and regulations without a town meeting versus a bylaw, which we think is, is, will be held in kind of a traditional way and will be forward-thinking to hold through, through several, hopefully, ten, fifteen years before we have to revisit it again.
Right. Additional thought here, in the draft bylaw, we need to add a line in there that indicates that it's subject to the rules and regulations and compliance with the rules and regulations, to reference the regulation document. Unless it's in there already, but probably somewhere-
I don't know at some point it was.
Yeah, maybe somewhere up in the purpose, so it's right off the bat, they know, suggestion. I also have comments back from the building commissioner and also from Facilities, which I should probably read into the public hearing record. And they apologized for not being here this evening, they had other obligations. So I told them that I would- Um, so I told them that I would read their documents in. So... Should I read them? So, today we received a letter from the facilities department. And I'm going to read it in its entirety so that it's, um, not, um, misstated. So, January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty to the Southborough Planning Board. Dear Chairman Morris, I'm writing in regard to a particular- and this is John Parent, Director of Facilities. I'm writing in regard to a particular portion of Section B of the proposed lighting bylaw being sponsored by the Southborough Planning Board. Currently, the wording that addresses existing non-conforming lighting fixtures reads as follows. And if you look on the screen, it's number one right up here, second to the last paragraph. The replacement of existing features shall be subject to the provisions of this section. Outdoor illumination that exists at the time of bylaw acceptance will be provided a grace period of five years from date of inception to comply with this bysl- bylaw as described herein. I would suggest that this wording be changed back to how existing non-conforming light fixtures were addressed in an earlier version of the same lighting bylaw. That wording read as follows. The replacement of existing fixtures shall be subject to the provisions of this section. However, the replacement of existing non-conforming lamps or fixtures with the same or lower output non-conforming lamps or fixtures is exempted, exempted. I believe this change in wording would be beneficial to residents, businesses, and the town as it would provide the ability to change out failed pieces of equipment with more compliant equipment. The ability to replace a fixture that is part of a group of fixtures with a matching fixture. And replace entire groups of fixtures with new compliant fixtures once said group has met the end of its lifespan. As requiring that recently installed LED fixtures that do not meet the Kelvin and or human, the lumen requirements set forth in the new lighting bylaw be taken down, replaced, and be basically discarded in a landfill within five years does not send the best green message. I think the change in wording I'm suggesting would be a responsible alteration to the lighting bylaw. And that was received in an email, um, midday today. Attached is my suggested, my suggestion in regard to the wording that addresses existing non-conforming lighting fixtures in the lighting bylaw being sponsored by the planning board. Also today, we received a letter, a memorandum from, um, Lori Luvoli, Building Commissioner, to the Southborough Planning Board regarding proposed outdoor illumination bylaw. As the current proposed bylaw is written, in my professional opinion as the zoning code enforcement officer, to include residential properties, single-family homes that are not required to appear before the planning board for site plan or pool, have a hearing and a written decision cannot be enforced for several reasons, including but not limited to the following. Number one, legality trespassing on property. Number two, building per- building permitting not required for landscape lighting. Number three, electrical permit may be required, but inspector enforces wiring design, shielding lumens, et cetera. Four, staffing. Five, building and energy codes for new construction or alterations are already regulated at the federal, state, and local level, i.e., US Department of Energy, International Building Code, stretch code in green communities are incorporated into design standards for lighting controls, mechanical systems, et cetera. Another area relative to enforcement of the proposed bylaw is included under applicability. Outdoor illumination that exists at the time of bylaw acceptance will be provided a grace period of five years from date of inception to comply with this bylaw as described herein, quote. The Massachusetts zoning act specifically, as well as Southborough, has specific language regarding existing building structures, uses, et cetera, that allow, if met or approved at the time, installed, approved, or other, to continue without mandating compliance to a new code bylaw or other, if not deemed a safety hazard. Thank you, Lori Luvoli, Building Commissioner, Zoning Enforcement Officer. So, those are the documents that were officially received. So, if the working group has comments.
Any, uh, questions or comments at this time? Mr. Stein?
So, the thirty-three percent increase in light pollution since two thousand seventeen, um, I'm not sure that I've seen a thirty-three percent increase in lights or installations. And that's outstanding. We're talking a third increase since two thousand seventeen? How, how could that be? What, what do we attribute that to?
There, there are two, two reasons. The, the borders of the town don't block light. So, some of that is coming from neighboring towns. Um, the light domes of these towns overlap with each other. And so, so, you know, we're surrounded by some towns that have a lot more lights than we do. Uh, is one. The second one is the type of lights. So, as, um, in the past five years alone, a lot of, um, places in Southborough have converted over to LED lights. The very ones that we're, we're concerned with, they have more blue light. Blue light is higher in energy. It scatters more. So, it literally bounces off surfaces more and goes up into the sky. Um, so it pretty dramatically increases the, the light dome and the light pollution that's there. So, we don't necessarily have to have more developments in order to get increases in light pollution. One of the biggest things that, that's, that, that we're concerned about on a global level is turnover to LEDs, especially the ones that have more blue, dramatically increase light pollution in that.
So, is there any way to quantify that specifically to Southborough? Like, do we know how many conversions there have been in the town? Or is there any way to measure, you know, cause if we're gonna talk about a thirty-three percent increase and, and use that number at town meeting to try and get this passed, it's gonna be questioned.
Sure.
And we have to have something to hang our hat on in terms of why we're using that number to justify this.
Yeah, I mean, one, one of the things that's absolutely not clear, so this projector is doing some crazy things. But if you actually look at those slides, the light map alone is, is pretty good. You can actually see some hotspots in Southborough that sort of indicate exactly where, um, some of the local ones have, have come up. There's areas near the trans-
That's like measured by a satellite or something?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a specific satellite to measure this stuff. It's been up since two thousand twelve.
So... Something that occurred to me while, while you guys were talking about this, like holiday lights. It is exempted.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Just like the regular one. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
We're not gonna curtail that stuff.
Was there any discussion about grandfathering of current? I mean, just to simplify things for enforcement?
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. And, and I, I, I think I'd say, I mean, I, I don't wanna, you know, maybe Sarah can comment first. But, um, we talked a lot about it. Um, it's no surprise that, that this five-year compliance period is the most contentious part. Um, this was us trying to seek best practices. Um, this is us trying to say that in the past five years in Southborough, a lot of places have already converted over to LED lights that are gonna last for twenty years. And it's an attempt to, to, to be environmentally conscious for the town. So, we have, we have talked about that. It's something that, that, you know, we obviously can consider. I'll say that at the, at the state level, um, they do grandfather all of the, the existing lighting, um, already. Uh, because obviously there's, there's contentious issues about that at the state level. One thing I, I think I'm gonna strongly recommend to the planning board, um, after talking to Mr. Parent about our situation with the street lighting, I think I'm gonna make a very strong recommendation that we not exempt the streetlights. Um, those are due to be turned over. National Grid currently owns them. And I think one quick and easy way for us to dramatically increase, increase the light pollution in town is to let those streetlights turn over. Uh, National Grid right now is only using four thousand K. And, um, a lot of towns have had some issues in doing that.
Okay.
Can I just, can you clarify that? And you gotta, I just, we can't hear you. I can't hear you. Um, when you say turn over?
Yeah, the, the, they'll be converted to LEDs, the streetlights. Um, and when we talked to Mr. Parent about that, um...
But ownership will be maintained by National Grid?
Yeah. And the way that he explained it is that National Grid gets to make the call on that. With apparently little input from the town.
The call on?
On when to turn them over and what to turn them over to.
Converting the light type.
Right. The light type and the correlative color.
So, National Grid will continue to own the lights and replace the lights and the, the bulbs in those fixtures? And, um, I would think that, and I'm just trying to bring this out now so that we can address any objections, cause I'm sure this will come up at town meeting. We would probably need to get some kind of commitment from National Grid if you wanna exempt, if, if you don't wanna exempt the streetlights. Because otherwise, if that doesn't happen, we can't propose that.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Uh, I know that when I, when I did some research, um, on this, it, it's really a question of will, um, to either sit down with National Grid and have some conversations about it, um, which I don't think has happened.
Do you feel that's something that can happen prior to the next public hearing?
Uh, yeah, I don't see why not. Um, I'm, I'm just not sure who the right person to do that would be.
Yeah, I think that, you know, like, we should help coordinate something like that and work on who that would be. But I think if you're gonna try and exempt the lights and the bu- not exempt the streetlights, it's gonna be a, a stop, a, a showstopper.
So, um, of the states that have adopted a light pollution reduction legislation, most, if not all of them, have a provision where streetlights are included, where streetlights are not exempt.
Including, if I'm not mistaken, the one that's coming down the pipe in Massachusetts.
Yes, Massachusetts- Needs are owned by the public utility.
So, Massachusetts, if it passes, the streetlights will be included in looking at, uh, what type of lights can be put there.
And does that mean streetlights that are owned by the, the, the public utility or the local?
Streetlights that are owned, yeah.
Any streetlight.
By anyone, any streetlights.
In the public way.
And the same thing, again, with, with the, um, states who've already adopted. Um, and, you know, there's specific provisions that even on the highway that those, um, that those lighting levels maintain at a lower-
Yeah, roadway lighting, um, unassociated with intersections of two or more streets. They, they have language in the, in the, uh, I'm just trying to scan it quickly.
That's the proposed state?
Yeah, yeah, House and Senate, right? They're identical bills.
Already passed?
No.
Okay.
They're in legislation now.
So, they're not concrete yet?
No, no, no.
And then also, something that might impact, and we'll have to work on this too, is, um, there are existing contracts with National Grid that the town has. And, you know, what are the legal rights the town has to request certain things? To get National Grid to, do they, you know, do they have to comply? Can they just say no? You know, if they have a inventory of X amount of lights that they've planned to use and they've already bought them, unless they can trade them out or whatever?
Yeah, and I, and during our conversations with, with Mr. Parent, um, I, uh, I offered up what a lot of other towns have been doing. I don't, I mean, the, I don't know how we do this in a public hearing, right? But, but this is a map of all of the towns in Massachusetts, um, in green that have bought the lights out from National Grid. Um, there are grants that are being offered to finance a large portion of doing that. And so, what they've chosen to do is rather than allow, um, National Grid to dictate what's gonna happen with the lighting in the town, they purchased the lights out and did what they wanted with it. So, there are options. And I think what I'd suggested is that we at least explore those.
Right, and I think my recommendation is just from a planner's point of view is that, um, in order not to stall the bigger effect of, and I understand street lighting is very important cause it's everywhere, right? But not to, maybe not, the, maybe, and if the planning board agrees, maybe to not stall the overall effort that you don't, that you leave it exempt for now. It's just a suggestion. And we tackle that at a future time when the process is more familiar to everybody. And right now, it's more of a one-to-one change, what we have to what we're proposing, because we're already proposing a, a, a different way of thinking about, you know, in the rules. We went, we're going from foot candles to bug standards, right? And it, it's very different, cause years and years and years we go by foot candles. So, and, and it's not super difficult. It's just a big change. And if we can't get that, all that information straight about, uh, the public utility and their contracts and how that affects the town and facilities, it could be a, a big hurdle, just like the, um, five-year requirement to comply. Those two are really strong points.
Let's go to Mrs. Houlihan.
Um, thanks, Karina. I think that, uh, I, I thought you were going down a different path. A suggestion of actually trying to figure out who does negotiate the contract. Um, I, I'm certainly willing to compromise, but I'm kind of dead set that I believe that if this is an effort we're really gonna take on, that we should take it on. And if we exempt things because, you know, if there's a grace period in there and, and there's a, a significant amount and we can negotiate a contract or we can buy out or find grants, I think we should understand what we're faced against. Um, but I'd rather do that first before, um, before moving forward to, to exempting things that I think defeats the entire purpose of what we're trying to do here.
And I'm, my point is that it's exempt now? And maybe we do one step and then the next step? Because, um, I don't know where the working group or the board stands on the non-compliance, or complying for five years, and then also the exemption. So, I'm just kinda throwing it out there so that it's, doesn't pop its rear, its ugly head the day before the me- town meeting. That's all.
Mr. Stein?
So, in terms of enforcement, in a practical example, my neighbor, um, hangs a very bright LED light on the exterior of his home. And I don't like it, so I call the chief enforcement op-, um, zoning officer. And I say, "Hey, can you go check this guy's house out and see what's going on with this light?" Does, should I assume that the, the zoning enforcement officer has some piece of equipment to measure it? Or how would that, if you could just lay out the enforcement process?
I mean, I'm gonna say I don't, I don't know. Because right now, there's even a dispute as to whether that falls within the confines of the bylaw. Um, the enforcement officer right now is saying that it doesn't. Um, we have information and opinions from other towns that have exactly the same language to say it does. So, I, I, I can't comment on that part of it. That's sort of how the town, nuts and bolts of how the town gears move. Um, you know, I'm just commenting on the science. But, um, I think as it stands right now, my opinion is simply that in the existing bylaw, the lighting covers anything that's over a, whatever it is, a hundred and twenty watt bulb that's hanging off of your house. Um, I wouldn't presume that you'd need a specialized piece of equipment to do that. Um, it, there are, um, there are photometers that you can use, um, simply to pull it up in front of the light to see how many lumens it's giving off. Um, that's how these luminaires are actually rated and all that stuff. But, uh, I, I would hope that, I mean, we, we were actually talking about how often this kind of stuff happens. And, um, you know, our, our hope is, is that this kind of stuff could be worked out neighbor to neighbor. It's not gonna require this kind of thing. But, um, in terms of the brightness of these things, it's, it's typically pretty obvious. Especially a correlative color. You can tell by eye whether it's four thousand K or three thousand.
Mrs. Latrell?
I think that they, that residential isn't exempted now. So, whatever they've been doing as far as enforcement to this point, since whenever this, uh, the original lighting bylaw was implemented, I would think you'd just continue to do the same thing, but other, under the new parameters. And I would agree with Mrs. Houlihan. If they're, like, right now, our streetlights aren't overly bright. And if they're due to switch them all out to really bright lights, I think that we, that, that would defeat the purpose of, uh, working towards, you know, the Dark Sky Initiative and, uh, in reducing the blue light if we had really bright streetlights everywhere. So, I wouldn't, I would be in favor of exploring how we can get, uh, National Grid to compromise with us.
Jack, did you wanna go?
I, I do. I mean, we're, we're talking about the street lights.
Oh, get up. Yeah, okay.
John Bodleini, Four Wire Circle. We're talking about the streetlights, which are exempt, so they're, they're not gonna come before you. I think we get a, we get a bill for these. We pay for these lights. I think we get a bill for these, we pay for these lights, so probably the easiest way is to shut some of them off, but they come under a road safety act, so most of them have been put up over the years in intersections in different streets.
I think there was an effort several years ago to, when the budget was being looked at, and there was an attempt to reduce that electric bill-
That's right.
-for the streetlights, and to reduce the number of streetlights on the different roads, and if I remember right, the selectmen were told, or they relayed to the rest of the town, that they have no authority to remove any streetlights, even though you can tell on some streets, you know, there's just one right after the other, and if you took every other one out, you'd still have plenty of safe travel. But I think that, you can go back, I'm trying to think who would remember, probably, maybe Jimmy Colari would remember, but-
No, I remember it like you, I think there was like a public outcry or something about it, that they didn't want to change it.
But they were told, it was like an outrageous answer, that we had no authority to reduce, and there was no desire for the utility to eliminate or reduce the number of streetlights.
It's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, the bill is.
Yeah, it was a big target for a reduction, and if I remember right, it was, at least initially, it was not successful, maybe since then, I don't know.
I know. I don't, so I don't even know how you would start the conversation, I mean, you can call them up, but they're not gonna come here, I doubt that.
Well, that's, I think, where we want to leave it tonight, if there's no other concerns, I-
Well, I had one other thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
We're talking about exemptions, and I just wanted to know, because my travels, the most outrageous thing I think we've done is the lights at Woodward School are now eighty feet high, and I just kind of think, I know, the guys do play baseball down there, but you drive by there and the lights are on and nobody's there, and so you, I'm just, we're talking about exemptions. Are the schools, St. Mark's, Fay School, are they all exempt? How does that work? You're saying no, but you don't get to vote, I don't-
No, or at least, I don't know, you know, what kind of provisions exist, you know, under the current bylaw. They're not called out, certainly, as being exempt under the current bylaw, but in the new proposed version, you know, IES has very specific requirements for community sports and recreation lighting outside, like what you're describing, and so, you know, they would follow those recommendations.
Because if you drive up White Bagley and the lights are on at Woodward, and now you get the fire station and police station, you got a lot of light there that wasn't there five, six years ago.
Yep.
And it-
I think they received a use variance for those lights, the height.
For the height, they received a variance, I don't know about use or whatever, they did receive a variance, but I know that, nobody wanted to go against the baseball. I don't know if this affects Mooney. Mooney Field has supposedly, they're on schedule to get lights too, aren't they? Or did they withdraw?
They're currently working on plans. They haven't submitted anything officially that new, but they're working on them.
So, we've spent a good amount of time on this tonight, and I think that's very good. Want to move on. So we have, one, two, three, four more planning board meetings before the town meeting. And hopefully, maybe by the next, our next meeting, which is February tenth, we can get some clarity from town council on the applicability of residential. We can get more knowledge if the subcommittee, if your group is willing to reach out either directly or through a town channel to the streetlight people. And just keep moving forward with getting clarity on these items and, you know, refining the things that we talked about tonight. So, we've continued the previous two hearings to our next meeting, and I would recommend that we do that, and also look forward to taking advantage of our planning board meetings on the February twenty-fourth, March ninth, and even March twenty-third. Trying to think if we can hold the public hearing within seven days of the town meeting. I have to check on that, but there's several opportunities for us to make this work. Just for what it's worth, I happen to agree with the two letters that we received. I think the five-year is, should be removed. So, I think there's one more speaker.
Yes, thank you, because I politely let Jack take my spot, fully expecting to ask a couple of questions. Thank you for going through this. I had a couple of questions. You mentioned that you can have a variance for the height of poles. Can there be a variance for level of light? And is that something, if you haven't considered it, that the working group can look at and how that could be worked into the rules or regulations, and discuss whether it's a, you know, if you haven't considered it, how you could regulate it, whether it would be allowable or not? So that was one issue I came up with. And then, I had a question about the outdoor sports light, I think in your presentation you talked about four thousand K, and I know, maybe it's in the regulations, but when we had a, when you had a hearing here on the St. Mark's lighting, we talked about different levels of stadium versus, you know, school age, is that somewhere? Because certainly, they didn't all need the same, you know, stadium-
Right.
-professional football player lighting for a elementary school-
Yes.
-T-ball game.
So, in the regulation, it calls out the specific thresholds per the number of anticipated spectators, as well as the level of sport being played. So you would need, like you said, less lighting for kind of a T-ball team versus like a college-level team.
Okay, thank you. I would also agree to look into the streetlight before you walk away from it, because that's the biggest potential lighting up of our town coming down the road, and that, and maybe making it clear to people it's in some PR, I don't know if you're doing handouts and PR, about, exactly about the thirty-three percent, that it's the type of lighting, and we're switching over to that lighting, and before we even have totally lit the town, we're already up thirty-three percent, not because of more, the development, but because of the type of lighting and what that street lighting would actually do. So thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
Mr. Mills.
Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we extend the public hearing for annual town meeting warrant article update section one seven four dash two dot, oh, sorry, one seven four dot dash twelve dot one, outdoor illumination to February tenth, twenty twenty, at seven fifteen PM.
Second.
Oh, since we made it seconded, to continue the hearing. Any questions or comments, all in favor, we're continuing that one. Thank you, thank you, Dr. Heilmann.
Thanks.
Yeah, appreciate all your work on that.
Thanks for your time.
Okay, next item on the agenda, and we want to make sure that we follow the procedure. We, there was discussion leading up to this posting of the public hearing notice, and as a result, more questions were asked relative to following the right procedure. So, in the absence of our own town council, Jay Tallerman, who has frequently filled in for ALDO in that capacity, was involved in guiding the planning board for tonight's public hearing. So, as you know, the public hearing notice appeared in the proper form, in the newspaper, in the proper times, in order for us to hold the public hearing tonight. But, again, through the work of the town planner and requesting clarification, we received guidance from Attorney Tallerman through, through the town administrator. Says here, it, so, before I read this, we'll ask the town planner to read the public hearing notice, which will open the public hearing. Karina.
This is the public hearing notice, the town of Southborough, dated January seventh, two thousand twenty. States pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section five, the Southborough Planning Board will hold public hearings on Monday, January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty, beginning at seven oh five PM. In the Thomas J. McCall of Hearing Room, second floor of the townhouse, seventeen Common Street, Southborough, MS, oh one seven seven two, for the following. At seven twenty PM, annual town meeting warrant article to amend the zoning bylaw to establish a downtown overlay district within the current downtown business village district area. A copy of the proposed language can be viewed in the Office of the Economic Development at the Southborough Townhouse. Any person wishing to be heard on the proposed language should appear at the time and place designated sincerely Donald C. Morris, Chair, Southborough Cleaning Board.
So, with the public hearing properly advertised, and the public hearing notice-
So, with the public hearing properly advertised, and the reading of the public hearing notice, and having it properly posted, the public hearing is open. So now, following the guidance of our attorney, I'll read this. Is my view that this process was not properly initiated. The EDC is not among the boards that may start the zoning bylaw process. That does not mean that they cannot propose bylaws, but they would have to rely on the select board or another authorized entity to submit them for consideration. In other words, the EDC cannot independently initiate the zoning process and trigger a planning board review. They could have, however, provided the bylaw to the select board and asked if they initiate the process. This does not appear to have happened in that, as I understand it, the selectmen never transmitted the bylaw to the planning board to initiate a formal review. Accordingly, it is my opinion that the planning board is without jurisdiction to hold a public, to hold a hearing on the bylaw. It is my recommendation that the planning board may wish to open the hearing, note the defect, and then table the discussion due to a failure to adhere to requirements. So, following his recommendation, we opened the hearing, and by reading this, I believe we have noted the defect. So, the next form of the guidance was to table the discussion. Town planner followed that with a request for clarification as to what tabling means. Does that mean opening the public hearing and then continuing it, or opening it, noting the defect, and then closing the hearing? And again, through the town administrator, we were advised that tabling really meant to close the public hearing. So, that's our intent tonight. So, consistent with this, we received a letter dated today, a copy of a letter that's from the Economic Development Committee to Brian Shea, our, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, will ask the town planner to read that, that letter as part of tonight's record.
The letter's dated January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty, to Brian Shea, Chair, Board of Selectmen, from the Economic Development Committee for Southborough, and it says, Dear members of the Board of Selectmen, the members of the Economic Development Committee are writing to request that the warrant article seeking approval at town meeting to change the zoning in the downtown village business district be withdrawn for consideration at the March two thousand twenty town meeting. First and foremost, the EDC is concerned that the proposed zoning amendment requires additional work before being submitted for public discussion. In addition, procedural concerns have been raised by the recent letter addressed to select person Lisa Braccio by town council, which EDC seeks to address prior to moving forward. The EDC has learned a great deal throughout this process and will require additional time to produce a proposal that will meet the objectives for which it is intended, namely to provide a zoning bylaw that will promote mixed-use development of a scale that is in keeping with the small-town nature of our becalic New England community and in line with the recommendations of the current master plan. The EDC intends to act fully within the confines of all legal and procedural requirements and will ensure that its efforts going forward include the proper timing and procedures in its collaboration with the planning board to amend the zoning bylaw for the downtown village business district. The EDC will take additional time to consult with planning consulting resources, both public and private, as well as to secure technical assistance from legal experts fluent in the language of zoning, to produce a proposed amendment for review. The EDC continues to appreciate the Board of Selectmen's attention and support in this matter, and we look forward to continuing to work with you toward a zoning bylaw which will provide the flexibility and certainty necessary to allow small-scale development and revitalization in our downtown business village district. We will continue to work with residents in the appropriate boards and committees toward this goal. Yours sincerely, Thomas L. Collins, Chair, Economic Development Committee, which was, letter was copied to the Board of Selectmen, Mark Purple, Town Administrator, and the Planning Board.
So, I'll just give a little bit more background, and then we'll open it up. So, there was, like I said, there was discussion, including between myself and the town planner, relative to going ahead with the public hearing, going ahead with advertising it, even though there were questions about the readiness of the article or even the procedure. So, we felt that it was the lesser of the evils to go ahead and properly advertise and properly open the hearing, so that our piece of the action, our piece of the process, we could, we could do that, and if it wasn't correct, or if, in fact, there was a defective process, there was no real harm, there may be some inconvenience and some expense, but there was no real harm to go ahead and open the public, advertise and open a public hearing, thinking that if we had decided not to do that, and then it was later determined that there was no defect, and the hearing could have, could proceed, and the article could move forward, but wouldn't because we decided not to hold the public hearing. We thought that that was worse. So that's why we got to this point. That's our piece of it, and our thought process behind it, out of respect for the EDC and their hard work, we felt that we would go ahead and do this, and then see what happened, and that's, that's what's happened. So I'll open it up to questions. Mrs. Latrell?
First, I'd like to thank Selectman Braccio for her attention to detail, because had we continued down this road in this bylaw, you know, passed at town meeting, it may have been rejected by the Attorney General and remanded back to town meetings.
I just want to recommend that we don't address the merits or the technical part of the proposed bylaw.
No.
That we only talk about the process, and try, and now that it's been explained, if there's any questions relative to that, we can talk about it, but again, we've been advised by council to open and close the hearing, and so I don't think it's appropriate for us to go into any of the merits of the proposed bylaw.
Right.
Okay.
Wasn't discussing the bylaw. But, so that, I think she saved us a lot- But, so that, I think she saved us a lot of time and heartache and should be thanked and commended for that. My second question is, how did we get a letter from EDC when they haven't had a meeting since the sixteenth? Was that written outside of open meeting law? Because town council had not opined by the sixteenth.
I can't really answer that other than I would assume that they also asked special counsel for opinion through town administrator on how to proceed in respect to the question that I asked, how does the planning board proceed? So, they may or may not have been also instructed to provide a letter to withdraw it for closure. But that's just an assumption.
But it was written from the committee and they haven't met since the sixteenth. And they did not discuss withdrawing on the sixteenth because I was at that meeting.
Perhaps it should have come from Marika.
Well, they discussed it, but they did not agree to withdraw.
Yeah, I don't have.
They were moving forward at that time.
Would you like the town planner to advance that question through the town administrator?
I think so. I think adhering to open meeting law is important, especially when we're talking about zoning.
Is that okay with the board to have Karina ask town administrator the question that Mrs. Latrell was asking? So, they're, everyone's saying, we want you to do that in your spare time. Uh, any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we close the public hearing for Annual Town Meeting warrant article to amend the zoning bylaw to establish downtown overlay district within the current downtown business village district as requested by the applic, uh, the EDC and advised by town council.
Second for discussion.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion.
I would just adjust the motion. It was actually not town council.
I was trying to think of what.
I was just noting that it was not town council that recommended that, it was a special council.
By recommended by a special council.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Motion's been made, seconded, and then adjusted. Any other questions or comments? All in favor to close the public hearing? Five to zero. Public hearing is closed. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is review of the open space and recreation plan. Freddie.
No pressure.
Hi.
We'll ask the town planner to give us an update on this agenda item.
At the last planning board meeting on January twenty-seventh, um, the planning, huh? Oh, I'm sorry, January sixth? Sorry, January sixth, um, we, the, the planning board had, um, been informed about a request from Conservation that recently they had finished, finished the revisions needed as required by the EEA for the approval of the open space and recreation plan. And we're asking that, um, the members of the planning board review the open space and recreation plan and provide a letter of support for it. So, at the last meeting, there hadn't been enough time, there was so much going on, so we pushed it to this meeting, hoping everyone would have a chance to take a look at that document so that, um, the planning department can be tasked to hopefully provide a letter of support.
When did you plan to write the letter?
As soon as possible.
Tomorrow?
Yes, if possible.
Open it up to the board. Any questions or comments, input? Mr. Mills, Mr. Stein, Mrs. Latrell?
I support.
Uh, we will draft a letter reflecting the support of the planning board for the current open space and recreation plan as provided by Conservation and Open Space chaired by Freddie Gillespie. Thank you.
If there's no other questions or comments, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is planner's report.
Okay, let's see if we can. Couple of updates. Previous meeting on January sixth regarding the tree removal at Deerfoot Road, um, the planning board had tasked the planning department to draft a letter to the Board of Selectmen seeking clarification on the policy of removal for tree, of trees and the concerns they had related to that. Just to update you, on January twenty-first, two thousand twenty, a letter was submitted to the Board of Selectmen addressing those things. And I believe they're working on that. I also received commitment from Karen Galligan at the DPW that we do not plan on touching the stone wall at Deerfoot, and if the wall gets impacted, they will repair it to the existing state as required. So, we have a commitment, which was readily provided. So, Karen was working on that. The planning board and the Board of Selectmen received a letter from, um, the town of Littleton regarding a House Bill three-five-oh-seven called Governor Baker's Housing Choice Initiative requesting, um, let's see here, um, the, the Littleton Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, and Affordable Housing Trust offer a counterpoint to Needham's letter of October twenty-second regarding House Bill thirty-five-oh-seven. The Littleton Board of Selectmen and Planning Board send the attached letter to our legislative delegation. We encourage you all to join the conversation. So, Littleton drafted a letter, and Sarah, maybe you can talk a little bit more about this because you're more familiar, and in response to a letter that the town in Needham had provided, um, the governor's office regarding this House Bill, um, which was included in the Dropbox, um, which talks about, one of the most critical things is changing, um...
Two-thirds?
Yeah, from two-thirds down to a simple majority. So, Sarah, you go ahead, you're more.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, the crux of the legislation is taking the two-thirds majority vote necessary at town meeting for bylaw revisions and turning that into a simple majority. And so, the goal is to try to increase affordable housing, housing stock in general, and also promote mixed use, um, and those types of redevelopment efforts. CHOPS-E talked a lot about it this morning. It was a discussion item for them, and so...
Mr. Stein?
I would recommend a joint meeting with Selectmen and CHOPS-E so that we can collaborate on a response letter, an input letter, um, try to come to some consensus. I actually feel that this is a sort of a critical juncture, that this proposal, proposed legislation really strips, um, a lot of our autonomy and, um, a lot of the, the, most of the items on the list are things that we already do, such as allowing increased density through special permit process promoting more flexible development. Things of this nature, in my opinion, should be decided at the local level through local boards and committees. And reducing the, the threshold to, you know, these types of major changes is something that really, you know, we need to look at very seriously. So, I would just recommend to the chair that we try to coordinate with CHOPS-E and the Selectmen to get response together.
So, you're saying the three, the three?
Yes.
Planning, CHOPS-E, and Selectmen?
Yes.
So, we would do that through the town planner, requesting that meeting? Okay? Everybody with that? Anybody gonna attend that? Oh, look at that. Excellent. Okay.
Well, some of the options were that it would be at a planning board meeting.
Yep.
And the Board of Selectmen and CHOPS-E members would...
There was some discussion about either having it at an existing planning board meeting or an existing, um, Board of Selectmen meeting, you know, so that there wouldn't need to be an independent meeting, but to try to kind of collaborate at an already existing meeting date.
So, I have a potential scheduling conflict for February tenth. So, it's as good a time as any to mention that, um, that I probably will not be able to attend the planning board meeting that night. And, um, if there's any way to do this on a date other than that, that would be great. Thank you.
Any more on that? Next item?
We received a letter from Conservation Agent Melissa Danza. Oh, actually, this letter, this email was sent to you, Dawn. There's a municipal vulnerability preparedness workshop coming up, um, in Mar, in March, right?
Yep.
And if, if you, they were, she was asking, inviting you to attend, but if you can't, I forwarded the email to all the planning board members as a second person available, like some backup. It's an all-day thing at the Public Safety Building, but it'd be really helpful. In that same email, there was a survey link. If you take that survey regardless if you go or not, it's a general survey for that, for the MVP effort. So, um, I think Melissa said you'd, you'd let her know directly, and if we can't, we need another person.
I, I did read that email and I plan to attend. Kind of honored that they would invite me, um, and I would definitely try to attend and participate. So, I agree, myself and the rest of the board, to go, go to that link and take the survey, try to help out as much as we can on that.
Okay. I'm sorry Freddie left already. This was something came up just today or yesterday. So, Open Space Preservation Commission attended the Conservation Commission meeting last week, um, and there was talk about, um, a native species initiative, and the Conservation Commission asked for, uh, Open Space Preservation Commission to come up with a document or something substantial, something in writing that says what their initiative is so that it could be used by us, the planning board and the planning department, as well as Conservation, on the same page. And I think it, it links back to the conditioning language we put on, on, in the landscape topic where their, um, Open Space came up with some specific bullets. So, I think Conservation, Conservation was looking for Freddie to put together something like that so that we have a common ground document that when an applicant comes on, we can say, well, this is what the initiative is. This is what we're looking for as opposed to, you know, Saint Max came in and that worked all, that well. They had extensive landscaping there, but they were willing to work and did well. So, this would be kind of a heads-up front. So, um, we'll talk to Freddie and she's, see if she's working on something like that or see where that goes, but that's coming up. And I think, did we miss anything, Sarah? Anything you can think of? Nope, that is all.
Nothing that I can think of.
Okay.
Think, think. There was one more thing. There was one more thing we talked about this afternoon.
Oh, wait a minute. Tree City USA application? Did come back looking for an additional kind of budget document. So, we reached out to, um...
DPW?
Karen, to DPW, um, to, to receive that document, and we have received it, so we're gonna upload it and just kind of wait, but that was the only thing out of the whole application that we needed, so...
Yep, and the review's pending, so hopefully we can get that all buttoned up and it could be mentioned maybe at annual town meeting if that comes through.
So, uh, special thanks to Karen at DPW for giving us that document so quickly.
Yes.
Much appreciated. Mr. Mills?
Um, so, do you want to make a motion for it or...
Yeah, the meeting minutes, um, I'd like to suggest, sorry, I didn't, I didn't check my note here. Like to suggest that we, um, skip over that one and, uh, put it on our, our next agenda for those meeting minutes. There's a little bit of discussion that's needed. Okay? Okay.
Any, any other comments from the, the public? Terry? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor? Five to zero, we're adjourned.